Mr. Rich.
Present.
Mr. Venable.
Present.
Ms. Gilbert.
Present.
Mr. Seuss.
Present.
Chairman is present.
I have a prayer, Mr. Porter, their pledge, Ms. Gilbert.
O'er God our Father, we're truly blessed to have this wonderful country to live in. We're thankful for those in the armed services that are keeping us safe in dangerous places. We're thankful for them. We pray that you'll be with them and their families. We're also thankful for the first responders, the law enforcement officers, and those that are engaged in public service in local areas. We pray that you'll be with them and keep them safe and be with their families. We pray you continue to watch over us every day. In the Christ's name we pray.
We're allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we need to approve the agenda of the meeting.
I'll make the motion.
A second.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We have no awards or presentations. We don't have anybody signed up to speak. Let's move on to our discussion items. Number one, be aerial photography. Mr. Paul.
You know, every four or five years or so, we try to fly to county and get new aerial photography made. What we use to map, you know, that's where maps are based off of. So it's been, I think, 15 is the last time we flew. So that's a line item. I put it in budget every year. Bob tell you, it's one of those line items that the state allows me to, I can put money in that line item and carry it over every year to save our money. So in the past, what we've normally done is we'll always commit to, like when we buy aerial photography, we'll pay for a year. And then the next year, you know, sometimes it's taken us three years to pay it off. So we had a company that went and flight just got, give us a quote this year. It was well north of $100,000. I don't remember how much, but it was way over $100,000. So Spatial Net is the company that flew it for us last time. And what he does is he flies to county and he'll go to water, sewer, and gas. He'll go to 911. He'll get everybody involved instead of just us paying the whole load. So I know 911's in it, water, sewer, and gas, you know, there's several people that's involved in it. So his price was $58,000, which is half of what my other quote was. And I did put $30,000 in the budget this year for that. I didn't intend on spending this year because we're, like I said, we're going to roll it over every year until we have enough. But since he's gotten done, I don't commit to until I know you guys. I've got the $30,000 in the budget to pay him half this year, but I gotta pay him next year. So I just, I would like to run that by y'all. You know, it's usually about what we put in the budget every year anyway for aerial photography. But I don't want to commit to something without at least letting y'all know that if I pay him 30 this year, I'm going to have to pay him another 28 next year. So I just want y'all to know that. You know, if you see, foresee any reason why we're not going to put that in the budget for aerial photography, I just need to tell them that, you know, we're not in this time. But it is something vital to our county. And I brought you a picture of the Google site so you can see, you know, that was, he flew that about, it's been five or six weeks ago now. They have to fly before the leaves get on the trees or anything. That's vital to.
Correct.
But just if you would, keep that in. I don't know that I really need you to vote on it. I guess I probably do. I think the chairman has to. I think you do have to sign it. You have to sign that we're going to, it's not really a contract, but it is. Because we're going to, you know, he's going to give us the maps and we're going to give you half the money and then give another half next year. Any questions? I appreciate them.
Thank you. If everybody's good with, we'll move out on the next week's meeting. Uh, it'll be the 13th. Next, the voting precincts. I thought I'd let it get the list made out. Last time, we just need to really, biggest things have some discussion tonight. We talked about Holly Springs moving into Pleasant Grove Community Center. And the other one, we would close Bishop's Store, Elster Ford, Hamrick, Trenton, Holly Tree, and Garth, and move to Princeton Fire Hall.
No, no, that's not what we have now.
That's what I got on that. That's crazy.
Red works there.
That's right. I don't have it all right here in front of me, Mr. Chairman, but what we was doing was closing the Pupman Mountain. And let's see, Pupman Mountain will be coming to Preston. Bishop will be going to Elster Ford Fire Hall. Pupman was coming to Preston Fire Hall. Holly Tree was coming to Preston Fire Hall. The Trenton and Garth precincts will be moved to both combined at the Trenton Fire Hall. That's the way it was on that part right there.
But I think what I've got today is from the EMA. The people working the voting is the one who had given me this list as the way they wanted to have it done. So I mentioned to whoever, you know, whatever else they fit. I'm just, this is just what we got from them.
Right. I talked with the ones, different box holders and things back when we started here back in, I guess, first of February or so. And they've all been understandable. And I did talk with Felix about what was taking place on these I just mentioned.
Can you go over those again? Got Pupman to big, uh, Pupman to Princeton.
Let's stop right there. Pupman, it ain't even on the list. Where y'all?
It's.
That's what I was.
Pupman.
Not where we're.
It'll be Hamrick. What is the word?
Hamrick.
Hamrick. That's where I was going.
Okay.
I wrote this paper.
Got Pupman Mountain, Princeton, Bishop to where?
Elster Ford.
Pupman with Hamrick?
No. Pupman, Hamrick will be brought, which is called Pupman Mountain. Hamrick Precinct will be brought into Princeton. Along with Holly Tree will be combined at Princeton Fire Hall.
And what does we have after Bishop to Elster Ford?
Bishop, Elster Ford could be combined at the Elster Ford Fire Department. Then we'll move on down to Trenton and Garth will be combined at Trenton Fire Department. Trying to put them all in the fire department where they had bathroom facilities and handicap facilities.
That's just affecting.
Instead of having seven, we've divided them to three.
We're missing, I'm missing something.
I am too.
Larkins Ford and Lime Rock are staying the same, so that's two.
No, we're not.
No.
We talked about not doing anything.
That's what I said. They're staying the same.
I mean, things are out here, but in the valley there were seven and we were turning it into three.
Right.
And I have six.
I only have six.
Let me go back with you again. We started Elster Ford. Elster Ford and Bishop will be combined into one at Elster Ford Fire Department. Holly Tree, Preston, and Hamrick will be combined into one at Preston Fire Department. The Trenton and Garth will be combined into one at Trenton Fire Department.
That Holly Tree was one of the.
Mr. Chairman, what did you have on that combination?
Me?
Yes.
This is what they had. Close Bishop's Store, Elster Ford, Hamrick, Trenton, Holly Tree, and Garth, and move to the Princeton Fire Hall. And so that would make one.
One, two, three, four, five of them?
Be one, two, three, four, five, six. Bishop, Elster Ford, Hamrick, Trenton, Holly Tree, Garth.
Okay, got it. And you're willing to bring some of those?
Yep. And then the other one was close Holly Springs, move it to Pleasant Grove Community Center. That one's one was on this list.
And that's part of it?
Yes.
And Mr. Seuss, what was your information from?
What?
What was your information from?
From all the box holders at each precinct. None of them really wanted to see them lose their precinct, but they understood. But when it was brought up, it's going to be combined to one. I won't tell you what was said on it. But when we went back and mentioned about putting it in three, and I met with them a couple of times, they was agreeable. And I think the other one that we talked about was over at the Aschville, was it not? The water department moved over to.
We talked about.
Lim Rock?
Yeah, no, we talked, yeah, Aschville to Lim Rock.
I've got it on my copy here. It was done about February.
And to Fire Hall?
And the, the report that we had mentioned.
Christian Home.
Christian Home.
Moving Chris, uh, closing Christian Home and moving it to Flat Rock Community Center.
There's been objection on that?
Uh, we've had, I think Mr. Rich has had a couple people call.
I hadn't heard any opposition.
That would do, that would do away with seven total.
And they cost, how much each?
Huh?
How much did we say they'd cost an each? Possibly several hundred.
Depends.
Well, it depends on.
The amount of bad pay.
Whether it's a local election or state election. Well, that's a good start.
Thirty two.
Thirty nine, counting absentee about it.
Three, thirty two.
Thirty one with absentee.
Mr. Rich, you have any more?
That's some, that's about what we planned on, I wanted, that I believe that we need to move right now.
Mr. Venable? Wait, is this way? We want that to be.
I think so.
Okay.
Might want to go through board registers and stuff and just make sure that they don't see any issues with this as far as districts and congressional districts and different things. But it's not because of maybe problems. I don't see a problem with doing this.
Okay. I don't see a problem if it doesn't cause a crossover with those. But there's one other one that's not closing, relocating. I'll try to speak about that one.
Yeah.
Macedonia votes at Macedonia School. And with all the new security things now, I haven't spoken to any of the school people. I just know that's been a concern that I seen personally. That, you know, because everybody has to sign into the school and they have to show ID to get in the school. And yet we're, every so often, we're sending all these people into the school to vote.
Yes, we're.
Okay. Now they're going to force them out?
They don't have to, people don't have to check in because it's, they use an outer door and nobody can go past a certain point. So it's pretty convenient to vote in there, but.
That may be the way Macedonia does it. I just seem to know that that's the location. And I was wondering if anybody else had any information about that. Because just with the change of the times.
Right.
I mean, 15, 20 years ago it was all great, but just things are changing.
One of our artist things is finding, finding a facility in certain locations that we even, that we could even do voting.
That we can access it.
Yeah. So like at Higden, there's, we're limited on, you know, there's not any county buildings. So we're limited to in schools as far as government buildings. So you're left with churches and, you know, that's been some of the issues that's been brought up. With some of these, it's been hard for our election workers to get in, to access, to get keys, to get boxes set up, then to go back and get them. And so places like Fire Hall makes it a whole lot easier for us to access, to get in and out. I put this list together and have it for the meeting. Next, I did, if that is agreeable to everyone. Uh, Mr. Seuss, you got anything else on those precincts?
No, I, I, the only question that I did have was Dean's Chapel. Is there a elect Christian there? A guy had said something about, he said, "How y'all work for that? With no elect Christian, no community building." I said, "I have no idea." I figured if Felix and them knew, so I said, "I didn't know if y'all knew anything or not."
That's the first I heard. I can find out.
I mean, I guess they've been making do, so that was a question I had no answer to. I said, "I have no idea."
Okay. I'll, I'll find out any answer next week. Next, the Mountain Lakes Behavioral Health Care Board. We've actually advertised it several times. We just got to run it again for two weeks. I just wanted to make sure everybody knew. We do have one seat available. If you know anybody that's interested in serving, don't have to order.
Go ahead and have a.
No, sir. It is.
The one that's in the seat now, they're not wanting to stay involved?
Yeah, they've already sat down, so it's vacant. Next, we have temporary labor for maintenance. Our maintenance supervisor's requested, he's got several projects going on. And he's going to hire a temporary, just a helper basically for a few weeks. You can find this, pick up the draft in there.
Show six months.
Yeah, but it's just going to be three. It won't be for that long. He just needs three or four weeks. I think that's just, we have to know them up to six months.
And the funds for that will come out what?
They'll just be our capital per hundred dollars for all these projects. Anybody else have questions I have? That on next week's meeting. Next, we have temporary labor for other works. Anything to say about that?
Dalton Thompson, he's had his work for us before. He was a very good worker when he was with us. He left and took another job and he did not work out and he's not back. It's a temporary.
Okay.
He is known, I think, you do know.
Oh, yes, he was. Yes, he was.
Okay. If nobody has a problem with that on next week's meeting though, so. Next, be the herbicide truck.
We found a herbicide truck that is on the state surplus. It's listed at $46,000. Jonathan has spoke with the man who ran it and took care of it and knows what kind of condition it's in. We have one herbicide truck right now trying to run the whole county. Our man who runs that truck is, has to work overtime quite a bit to try and keep up with the whole county.
Right.
And so we think this will be a huge cost savings for the county. If we could run two trucks, it would help cut down that overtime. Not to mention, if we could get the herbicide out in time we may, we wouldn't have to mow as much. And that mowing cost is huge compared to herbicide. And a new truck, a new truck is going to cost us probably close to $190,000 once you get it set up like it needs to be set up. And this one has a lot of extras on it already that the state has. We think it will be a very, very good purchase for us. And we have the money in the Fund 100 and our equipment money in that fund to cover this.
This truck also has some features in there. The current truck, they're not.
Yes.
Those are all the.
Has anybody went to inspect it yet? Actually looked at it?
Uh, no, I don't think Jonathan has actually went to see it. Nobody else has went to see it. He has just talked to the man who ran it and took care of it.
He said, "Yeah, I want to butt in," but I also talked with Jonathan about that thing. And he said he talked with the guy that's over the state, that's over all the herbicide trucks. And he called his name. I think it was Randy or something. I'm not sure if I'm correct or not. He said he checked it out. He didn't see any issues at all. He said there was a part that they had to replace, something about a pump, that he said it had been replaced. I think this will be a good thing because if everybody can see this past year, this past spring, Mother Nature has played a big part around, being, I guess you'd say, an offensive against these chemicals of being a farmer. You know, it's hard for them to work and not having time, frankly, to put them out. And then another thing too, if it was to have a breakdown on this other truck, not only the, what she just mentioned, but overtime, but you have a breakdown and you lose three or four days, it's just a big benefit because we can't keep up with a tractor and a bush hop. So I think this will probably be a good asset for us here.
Any more questions on the herbicide truck? All right, we'll put this on next week's meeting.
Another thing too, I will mention on that because I didn't think about it. I'd ask Jonathan because I'm always trying to save a few dollars. And he said, "Well," he said, "I go back and question that." He said, "If it goes to the auction, we might pay more." And I said, "Well, I kind of figured that through some good deals." He said, "They will not budge off of that. That's kind of what they've got a price on." And he said, "That's where we're at." I said, "Well, we'll have to stick with it then."
That's good. That's a heck of a price. That's a deal.
Yeah.
That's low miles.
Right, next, the County Road 17. Give an update on 17.
Yes, okay. So I know Jonathan's talked to y'all about the consultant that you've been discussing doing the work on County Road 17. And that consultant wants us to have some testing done to see what's out there. They do not want to give us a proposal on doing any work until we have some geotech testing done to see what's happening underneath the surface there. They are concerned that it might not be a slide that it is there. And so we got some proposals from four different geotech firms. The one we would like to go with is a little more than the lowest one. And the reason why, the lowest one, they are only going to do the testing and they're not going to make any recommendations as far as how to repair it. The one right above that, SMME, they will actually give us recommendations of how it should be repaired once they get the results from the test. So that's why we would like to go with. How soon can they do it? Well, SMME told me, I spoke with the lady last week, and if we can get this approved within the next couple of weeks, they could go ahead and get to it. They said if not, if it, if it goes on a little bit longer, it may be a while because there's so much going on all around us. And, you know, so many other slides and everything in other areas.
What about the report, their scope of work, how long it will take for them to report back?
She did not tell me that. I don't know for sure about that, how long it would take to get that.
Curious, you know, if we're looking at two weeks, four weeks, whatever. For like, I know, I know, once they come out and do the field work, they have to go back and do the office work and everything. But I'm just curious.
I don't know for sure about that, how long it would take to get the reports back. And this company, and the others did too. This company has worked with the firm that we were discussing doing the repairs. They have worked with them before. They consulted with them during this proposal. And the other companies did too. We gave, we disclosed all that information to them so they could work with that company to see what kind of testing they were going to need.
There are only two here to check off every box that if you've got that for. Double.
Well, in this way, according to what the testing shows, if it's something that we feel like we can handle versus, you know, having to hire all the work out, then we will have that recommendation and a detailed plan of how we can import them.
Do I have any more questions?
I don't, excuse me, this man, I thought the charity I was working with. I don't know if y'all getting any phone calls. I told her, I said, "I've got service left. I've been out there at different times checking on it." I guess the people are getting impatient, you know? I had a phone call this weekend and they said, "Well, the sun's been shining for days and we didn't even just pick the shovel in hand." But I told them, I said, "Well, you've got so many procedures you have to go through." I said, "We just got our paperwork back from FEMA. Is that right?" I said, "Probably 10 days ago or so." And I said, "We cannot just approach it without knowing what all guidelines we have to go." And I said, "We're trying to find out what's the next step." Another one said, "Is this going to be closed? Is this road going to be closed?" I said, "No, ma'am. It will not be closed." That's what the different person, I said, "This road is going to be fixed. The road's going to travel." And they know this one's got a child. She has to come into work and get them to ball practice. And I said, "We're trying. I know it's a hardship for each of them, but give us time. We are trying." This is not the only one we got, so.
If everybody's good with, we'll move on to approve the SMME. Next week. All right, we'll move on next to reports from staff. Anything else?
Yeah, I'm going to give y'all a look. They know we're around some other stuff. Besides County Road 17, and go with your FHWA with that one. The FEMA, we went to, I went to a meeting at Northeast last week with the FEMA and EMA officials to get the ball rolling on this, on the FEMA part of it. Me and Sharon are going tomorrow for training in Catta County on the FEMA portal system, how we enter this information in once we get one done and we get our money back. So it's, the ball is getting rolling on the FEMA stuff. It's just a slow, a slow process.
Yeah. Well, most of this we're going to have to do in-house, all that we can because we don't have the dollars to pay contractors and rest of these, they're talking about bond issue or something. They're doing it. It's going to take a considerable amount of time.
Right.
Rest of the dress, all the foreign language, and all the time that we spend and the dollars that we spend on that, that's that much less that we're getting done on our day-to-day night.
Well, we're really hoping, you know, the guys have been working doing the debris part and all the small stuff that they can do. And we're, we're working on compiling all of that. And that's what me and Sharon's going to learn, how to go to enter all that into their system, how they want it entered into their system so we can get our reimbursements. So we'll be starting that process pretty soon and hopefully see some money back before, at least by the time it's completed.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Porter? Uh, Mr. Rich?
I'm looking forward to a big trash splash this weekend. Everybody come out, bring a garbage bag and just start cleaning.
We're going to bring them.
But we're looking forward to that. Hopefully the weather will cooperate. And just everybody gives us, give us a little, you know, more time to get everything started. I mean, I've got calls about County Road 93. I mean, we just got to take heavy steps to make everything order. That's all I've got to say. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Venable?
I appreciate Mr. Rich mentioning their trash tournament. Started seven to three, free supplies. We've had close to $2,000 donated to our pool of money. So hopefully we can pick up, you know, a couple thousand pounds of garbage. And just, you know, anybody that's involved, a local charity, want to come out and pick up trash and check it off for their local charity, just please mention that there. That's all I have.
Is it, it's not too late for them either?
No, you can sign in anytime, anytime. I don't know. You can come at 2:00 on Saturday, sign in, get some free supplies, get it picked up when we back to the end by 3:00.
Is that, where is the starting point? Here?
No, we're going to have it, we'll be set up at the First National Bank stage at Jackson County Park.
Okay. I hate it not to be able to answer, but I had a couple. I don't, I didn't know.
I just wanted to, I think Jonathan probably talked to you. I just wanted to, and I think Jonathan probably talked to Charity. Lakes look out, the rumors out that we're permanently closing it. Spoke to Jonathan, he said absolutely not. It's just gonna be slow build like the rest of them. So, just wanted to let anybody know that else is concerned and get it out there that there is no plans to close it at this time. And same thing with, um, see everybody out Saturday with the trash?
Mr. Seas?
I wanna go back on the County Road Ninety Three that Andy just mentioned. That was at Bryant Saturday Day. And I, you know, might get the same questions. Was, was that road gonna be repaired? And I said, "Yes, it's be repaired." They said, "Well, they had an emergency situation, like I said, Thursday, and, uh, they could not get there. They had come up South Peachwood Way. And the rebel boys know about funding, that road might not have access to it anymore." And I said, "No, that should be correct." I said, "It's just one of those rumors. We're, we're trying."
Yeah, rumors been flying. We haven't made any decisions on closing any roads. Um, we have had, you know, questions, uh, trying to get our, our budget situation fixed. Um, waiting on the legislators right now to get back with us. They said that we're working on something, so, uh, I'm really looking forward to hearing what they come up with. Just thinking of something great for us, so, looking forward to hearing from them. Um, one thing that I would like to bring up was, uh, I'd like to have a pre-budget meeting to try to start having some meetings to discuss our budget problem. Uh, so, if y'all can get with me next day or two and let me know, look at your calendars and see when y'all be available, uh, we need to start having, having some pre-budget meetings to try to figure out what, what have you gonna take for next year.
Available just anytime.
Appreciate it. Or is anybody else got anything? Good luck. Any questions, Mr. Durn?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Durn.
Second.
I'll wish a favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those close?